September 12th, 2017, City Council meeting, and I will bring this meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance, and Kelly Menke will lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, this evening, again, we'd welcome those that are in attendance. We have council up on the dais, and we're attempting to connect with Counselor Rabkin to have her a part of it. She's on the road tonight, but wanted to be a part of the meeting, so we'll see how that goes, and we'll move forward with that. Tonight, our first item on the agenda is that we have a proclamation of-
Keep recalling Remy Wine's. Our tasting room is located-
That's advertising.
To McMinnville May Day in conjunction with the National Manufacturing Day. And who are we going to present this to? Jody? Good. So I'm gonna come out, and Jody, if you'd come up. And welcome. Okay, joyous. Well, it is with pleasure that we have this proclamation this evening, and I'll read that. Whereas manufacturing-
I may not have good enough reception out here to participate, but if the call drops again, then I guess I'm just, I'll just have to catch up later, but I'll try to be here.
Very good. The mayor's getting ready to read a proclamation.
Great, thank you.
Welcome, Remy. Hopefully, you can hear that. We're standing with Jody Christensen and about ready to read a proclamation on McMinnville May Day in conjunction with the National Manufacturing Day. I'll go ahead and read this. Whereas manufacturing makes a very significant contribution to the national, state, and local economy; and whereas our community is fortunate to be the home of over ninety world-class manufacturing companies; and whereas those manufacturing companies add to the vitality and prosperity of our community by employing over three thousand four hundred with a fifteen million dollar average annual payroll. Now hereby, I Scott A. Hill, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim October 6th, 2017 as McMinnville May Day in conjunction with the National Manufacturing Day. And in witness thereof, I have hereby set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed this twelfth day of September, 2017. Signed, Scott A. Hill, Mayor of McMinnville. Jody?
And, oh, yes.
There you go.
Quick photo.
And in that Jody really represents many facets of manufacturing. Just a word or two, if you have.
Thank you. Yes, while I stand here by myself, we really represent the ninety-plus manufacturers in our community who are vibrant and growing and innovative. There's lots of great stories that we've heard about lately with Organic Valley coming into our community, TTR purchasing a facility out on Highway 18, Solid Form Fabrication breaking ground on a new facility. So we certainly have much to celebrate, and we're very thankful that the city is a partner with us in helping support our manufacturing community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. That brings us to the next item on our agenda this evening. And tonight, we have a presentation by McMinnville Industrial Promotions. And Tom, I think you're going to be the spokesperson for that group.
I am, thank you, Mr. Mayor, but Doug Hurl, the president, likes to address the council first, please.
Come up, both of you. Get your seat and identify yourself, and then go ahead with your presentation.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for having us here. My name's Doug Hurl, the president of McMinnville Industrial Promotions. And a quick background for people that don't know what McMinnville Industrial Promotion is. I'll call it MIP as we move down through this. Just quick synopsis. Started in the late '50s by a group of businessmen who walked downtown McMinnville selling shares into a for-profit corporation. They could see that McMinnville was in some dire needs in those times, and they needed some manufacturing and some businesses to come to town. We've since evolved, since those times, to, again, a for-profit corporation, complete volunteer board. We get no salary. We own no stock ourselves, any of our board members. We lease currently about one hundred and forty thousand square feet of property in the city of McMinnville to several different tenants that you would know by name. We have no stake in the game in our presentation tonight. All of our signs are in accordance with the current sign regulation. Our transparency is shown. We want what's best for McMinnville. McMinnville Industrial Promotions is currently owned eighty-six percent by the McMinnville Community Foundation. We have one goal in mind in McMinnville is to promote industrial products and manufacturing in town. That's what our forefathers and our group wanted us to do. We continue to do it, and we will continue. Our only goal is what's best for McMinnville. We come here tonight because we've heard chatter on the streets among local businesspeople, city people, and they kind of want to know what's going on with a sign ordinance that is gonna come to fruition after several years of work by the council, by citizens of McMinnville. And they kind of want to know what's going on, and we wanted to address that. I don't want to address it because I'm not the guy to address these issues. I think it's better if we have our legal counsel, Tom Tankersley, who most of you people know. And it's not a legal issue for us at all either. It's, we're only here because we've heard chatter. We want what's best for McMinnville. We want to be transparent. We don't want to change the world, but we want to see a nice balance in McMinnville. And I think that's what everybody else is looking for as we move forward. McMinnville's gonna continue to grow. We want it to grow. We want a sign ordinance. We're not against a sign ordinance at all. We think it's the right thing to do. So I'm gonna turn it over to Tom, and thank you for your time.
And Doug, thank you. Just to set the premise, Heather and myself had an opportunity to meet with the board a week, a couple weeks ago, and heard some of their concerns and felt it might be wise to come and have a presentation so that we could listen to one individual and have a concise presentation given to us. And so that's where, that's why we have MIP in front of us tonight. So again, thank you, Doug, and Tom, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the council giving us time on your busy agenda to talk about this. And as Doug indicated, what we want to do is help you do what seems to always happen in McMinnville, which is to make things better. We think that, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thanks, Dave.
Yeah, I even pulled it, yeah, towards you.
Okay, thank you. So we would like to do that, and we'd like to make the sign ordinance work better for McMinnville, its businesses, and its citizens. I'd like to introduce, in addition to Doug, the president, the other board members here are Carol Granger, John McKeegan, and Alan Larson. And Harold Washington. And there are also people in the audience who I've discovered are interested in this as well, getting ready for the meeting. Gary Edwards, the owner of Calvin Ford, is here, as well as representatives for other property owners. So it's not just us. It reflects what's going on. And I apologize to someone out there who I've missed. As Doug told you, MIP believes that the sign- well, first of all, we understand that this is your decision, not ours. And we just appreciate the chance to give you some input. MIP believes that McMinnville should have a sign ordinance that works for its citizens and its businesses. And, as you know, the citizens and businesses are certainly an overlapping class here. We have a lot of businesses that are owned by local people. When I read the ordinance, I noticed the purpose talks about achieving a balance between the legitimate concerns of businesses and the legitimate concerns of the citizens. And we're asking the council to consider some refinements to better achieve that balance. And we understand that the council and staff have put a lot of time and effort in this already. We understand that. And we're not asking you to start over. We're not asking you to change anything about the health and safety part of it. But after the notices came out this summer, early this summer, for some reason, people's interest and attention was more sharply focused on exactly how it would impact individuals and businesses. And in addition, I think things have changed since 2009 as well. So I'm not embarrassed to ask you to relook at this at this point. An example is Calvin Ford. Gary Edwards, the owner, told us today that Ford is gonna charge him sixty thousand dollars to put a new sign up that'll essentially be the sign he has now but fifteen feet lower. Sixty, six-oh-thousand. And Nissan will charge him, they won't charge him all at once. They'll charge him an additional seven hundred, several hundred dollars a month over what he's charging now for as long as the sign is there. So this doesn't seem to me like a reasonable balance. It really doesn't. And again, this is not a- Gary's sign and the signs we're talking about are not health and safety issues. They're a balance between aesthetics and the needs of businesses. And sixty thousand dollars for this new sign that's the same sign essentially, but fifteen feet lower just seems wasteful. And it would seem to me that it's gonna be an example of costs unnecessarily imposed on McMinnville businesses that, and sometimes the customers as well, that really are far outweighed the marginal aesthetic value. Again, while I was out getting ready for the meeting, talking to people, I was talking to other people who are representing property owners here because they heard the council was gonna be thinking about this tonight. And one of them told me that the sign for the Safeway J.C. Penney Center is gonna cost about one hundred and thirty thousand dollars to replace to comply with a sign ordinance. So I know that the council has a well-earned reputation of being very careful when spending taxpayer money. I understand that, and I appreciate that as a taxpayer. I also think that the council is probably aware that local businesses have to have the same approach to the money in their businesses that you have to the taxpayers' money and be careful with it. And so that's why we're asking about this. As the mayor indicated, when we approached the city, the mayor and the planning director were nice enough to come to our meeting, and the mayor suggested we make this presentation. So we appreciate being able to work with the city this way. And the planning director has been very helpful in discussions with Doug and with me as well. And she explained the city's concerns. She explained the background. She explained all the things that you've done. And she also has been very clear that this is not her decision. It's your decision. So don't worry about that. We under- There was no question in our minds to start with, but she made it clear. And we understand that she's discussed several options with you for your consideration. And again, our goal is for a refinement, to have a sign ordinance that will appropriately balance the interests of the citizen, including our businesses. And we understand that you may be considering the idea of eliminating the draconian amortization rule that says, you know, this, now that the seven or eight-year period is over, we're going to, you know, you have to tear the thing out and start over with a rule that would allow signs that are prior non-conforming uses to continue if they're lawful when they were installed. And the example would be the Ford sign I just talked about, as well as many others, could continue until the owner made a significant change. And when the owner decides that the business warrants the change, the new sign would have to comply. And that frankly makes sense to us for the vast majority of the situations. There may be some that don't, and I'm sure your staff will talk to you about that if that's what you decide you want to do. And I also understand the council might be considering an extension of time to have a more formal process to review this and think about it some more, to investigate the fine-tuning now that everybody's attention is laser-focused on this. And we think that also could quite possibly produce a useful refinement. And as I hope the planning director told you, we came up with another idea and that MIP is asking that you consider. As I prepared for the meeting, I noticed that the sign ordinance language talked about both administrative and planning commission variance applications. That was, it's in the ordinance, and it talks about that. So I looked, and it, but it just didn't make sense. The way the existing variance ordinance works doesn't really make sense in terms of signs. And so perhaps, we thought, like, I noticed there was a solar panel section that has specific variance procedures for solar panel installations. It seemed to me that there might be new variance language that deals with sign ordinances, the variances to the sign ordinance that, and perhaps you could have one variance section that would apply to signs that lawfully existed in 2009, and another variance section that had, for signs that went in later for more narrow, more site-specific kind of issues. If you're interested in this concept, we respectfully submit that you ask staff to take a look at it and report back to you with a detailed proposal giving the pros and cons and the choices for your consideration. We'd be glad to provide input as I'm confident other local businesses would as well. As Doug indicated, he's more sure than I am because I haven't looked at him. But we believe that all the signs on our property are in compliance. But we also believe that other, that the community would be better off if there's a clear path to achieving the sign goals of this McMinnville-style balance. And I'd like to thank you for your consideration of our input, and I hope that I've saved some time if you have questions or to respond to some concerns you have.
Thank you, Tom. Turning to the council now. Any questions for Tom, or Doug, or members of their board? Okay.
I happen to be one of the few people that was here when we voted this in. The mayor and myself are the two. And although I would agree that it is, you know, nine years old, it went through a lot of public hearings at the time that we made this decision. And generally speaking, most people were in favor of it. It was understood that there was gonna be some large signs, but they were given eight years, now nine years, in which to be able to amortize the sign for tax purposes and basically have it completely written off. So I guess I personally have a lot of trouble understanding why I'm supposed to feel a great deal of regret over, you know, what this is gonna cost people. I appreciate it's very expensive. Really do. But it wasn't like it wasn't known. And I'm puzzled why it didn't come up maybe even three or four years ago when you might have started negotiating this a little bit sooner.
I don't have a good answer to that because I wasn't involved back when you and the mayor were on the council and did this. I suspect, given the date in 2009, that businesses were distracted with trying to keep their doors open with the recession then. And I know that people tend to- they're human. They tend to focus on things when they're immediate. And when you're trying to run a business and survive the recession, my guess is that that was, we'll worry about that if we survive till then. But I don't really know that.
But in the meantime, a number of people have been compliant and are trying hard to get in compliance.
And again, the staff would know. I don't know that people are spending sixty or one hundred and twenty or one hundred and thirty thousand dollars yet without trying to talk to you about this. And frankly, it would seem to me that it's really in the interest of the city that if there's a way to do this that doesn't impose unnecessary costs on businesses that don't have a big benefit for the city, that the way I normally have seen McMinnville function, the city would look back and say, okay, well, let's make this work for everybody if we can. I mean, again, we're not talking about, let's throw it out and start over. We're not talking about, let's don't have a sign ordinance. And we're certainly not talking about, you know, doing anything that would damage health and safety. It's just, it seems that the city has an interest in having a process that does this balance. And one of the reasons that MIP cares about that is that one way we attract industry and jobs is we have a government that works really well and that's accessible and that is reasonable. I mean, there are other, there's another large city to the north of us that would not fit that, the way they govern that city would not fit that bill in my mind. And I think they, I'm pleased to live here where people feel like the government will look at things and say, well, yeah, that, let's make this work.
Thank you. Adam, and then we'll just kind of work down to see if we have comments. And go ahead.
I wasn't here when this was drawn up, obviously. But when I did put a new sign on my business, I did make sure I was in compliance. And I think a lot of business owners that have came since 2009 have taken the time to do that. That being said, understanding the dollars and cents of running a business, I do feel that it would be advantageous for us as a council to elect some sort of grandfather variance of a percentage. I mean, if we have one hundred and forty signs out of compliance, and theoretically, a hundred of those are within a couple feet of height restrictions, why are we putting that burden on our business owners and our citizens when it's really within five or ten or fifteen percent of the height that the council elected to implement in 2009? If our restriction's twenty feet, and we got a bunch of twenty-two-foot signs, I just don't think we, as a city, are doing any worthwhile regulation to save the frontage on ninety-nine-two feet of sign height with the amount of impact it's gonna have on our business community and theoretically, our citizens when those costs trickle down into the product that that business is passing along to our citizens. So I would definitely entertain some sort of variance on that nature. But I would also like to have some enforcement behind of what we've already had. I mean, people have had ample time to write off their cost of signs, like Kelly alluded to. And, you know, I don't want to just have ten-year-old ordinances that have no weight behind them. So if we're gonna pass something, we need to stick to it.
Thank you. And I want to make clear that we're talking about people who, like you, to qualify for the variance or the grandfather clause or the prior non-conforming use provision, it would have had to been legal when they did it. They would have had to, if permits were required, they would have had to get permits, and they had to comply with the rules then. So it's not somebody who snuck something in without a permit and then now wants it. That we would, we don't think that behavior should be rewarded. So thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Kevin, any thoughts?
Thank you both for coming and representing the city and the businesses with your comments tonight. I agree with a lot of what Adam said and what Kelly said. I think the spirit of this ordinance has yet to be met. It's difficult to kind of measure whether or not this has been successful because nothing's really changed. And so I would really like to see us move forward to get all these signs into compliance. How we get there, I'm willing to be flexible on and a little generous, perhaps. But I think time has been spent. And I think you made a great point about the recession at the time. We've come out of that now, I believe. And I think if we need to be a little bit more strict with this ordinance now, it's a good time to start doing that. But I really want to see how McMinnville could change as a result of this. And that was the intent nine years ago. And I hope that we can get there sooner rather than later.
And staff can help me, but I think that for new signs And staff can help me, but I think that for new signs after the ordinance, the new signs have had to comply with that. Is that, is that correct? So I think there has been a change in that any new.
But the problem that existed nine years ago, they're still there. You know what I'm saying? Like the signs that were out of compliance nine years ago have not changed. And so as new signs come in, it's true, they're in compliance, but the problem still exists that existed then.
If you wouldn't mind, maybe if I just interject just one thing, Kevin? When you talk about the problems still exist, as you drive down Adams Street and you take a left on Third Street to go to one of the greatest Third Streets in America, I think. The downtown has been spectacular. And if you take a look at First Federal Sign and you look and see, what's the temperature? Oh, 63. Nope, my car says 61. And you talk about it until you get down to McMinimums with your wife. Now that sign is out of compliance. I don't think that's what the city council and the citizens of McMinnville were worried about when this thing went into effect in 2009. I think that's what we're talking about. Davis and Otto has a sign that's been there for 50-some years. Now you can depreciate all you want, but I don't think that Davis and Otto in 2009 said, that sign's not working anymore, let's cut it down and depreciate one out just because that's what the city wants us to do. And I also believe when we talk about depreciation, you might have an old tractor out on the farm that's completely depreciated. And now they have a Level 4 diesel motor coming in. And you're going to buy a brand-new tractor and your old one works just fine just because you want to depreciate it out because you want to be in compliance with the new EPA. I don't think that is really what happens in business today. Now, it does look good on paper, depreciation. And I think that people that are in business know that depreciation is not a real cash item. It's an item, but it's not a cash used item. So I think sometimes when you look at it from a business perspective and how you address these issues, I think it's a little clearer on really what the city council and the citizens of McMinnville were looking for. They don't want a skipper's fish and chips anchor hanging three feet over the sidewalk. And there's some other major things that they don't want. But I don't think they were looking for the First Federal sign that is currently out of compliance with the new.
I think your points will take him. I think we have to be careful too, that we can't discriminate on the content of the sign. Though First Federal's providing a service and is somewhat of an icon downtown, we can't discriminate between whether one has a temperature on it or the other one has, you know, might be for a tavern or something. We can't, under the First Amendment, we can't.
Right. I think we would be happy to work with the planning director to come up with some possible criteria that would say, okay, if you get the variance, you have to, you have to meet these criteria. And they'd apply to all signs regardless of what it said on the face of the sign. But I think it would, as Doug indicated, would be satisfactory to, certainly not all the citizens. We know we can't keep everybody happy all the time because that's, people have different opinions. But we think that most citizens would say, you've done a good job. And of course, you'll make that final weighing. But that's, we think we can do that without discriminating on content or in another improper way.
Thank you, Kevin. I'll come, I'll go down and come back, Adam. Alan, any comments from your perspective?
Just some thoughts. Thank you for the presentation and well-thought-out. You know, I agree with us as a city that's workable with the citizens and transparency and all that. We really do, we're different, we're set apart differently. But, can you hear me? The monster signs out there have always bothered me. And I know that had some impetus behind the sign ordinance way back when. There's three or four of them in town. And I don't know what we do about those. But I would, I would hope that we can reach some common ground on these. And for me personally, which I don't know if it means much, but I don't have a problem with the signs other than the big ones that are out there somehow got in, got a foothold. And so I look back at it and I know a few members of that sign committee that put in years of struggle and toil and came up with the ordinance of which it's been remodeled and reformed and retyped and everything and finally came up to what it is now, which is great because that's, that's good moving forward. No question about it. But I'm, I'm in favor of looking at it a little bit more deeper and see if there's some kind of common ground that we can get and still maintain the atmosphere of McMinnville and livability. And we like our businesses. We, we need them. We appreciate the hard work of our businessmen and women. And so, yeah, I'd like to take another look at it.
Thank you, Alan. Wendy?
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in. I was on the planning commission at the time when we passed the sign ordinance. So I appreciate you guys acknowledging how much work went into it. It definitely was not a thoughtlessly put-together document. But I also appreciate that the way you're talking about not throwing out all of that work, but looking at maybe an aspect of it, which from what I've heard from you gentlemen tonight and just around town is the implementation of it and how it rolls out. We haven't looked at it as a body since it was implemented in any kind of detail. So I would be in favor of seeing if there was, there is a way, looking at other information that we have presently for us to meet the needs of the city and work with getting feedback from people who may not have realized that it was important to give input at the time because it would impact them greatly. And to make sure that we get feedback to see if we could, if there are improvements that could be made for the implementation of the vision, the original vision, which is to make McMinnville a better place. I mean, I think we all agree that that's what we want to do. And the businesses are an integral part of that, makes our community thrive. So I appreciate the thoughtful testimony. It really helps us to be able to do our job.
Thank you, Wendy. Adam?
I just wanted to thank Doug for your secondary points there and also point out, from my understanding, there is a historic provision for signs or we've talked about that and considering that for signs like First Federal or Farnham Electric or the Blue Moon or, you know, things that have been staples. And you can see in pictures that are 30, 40, 50 years old. So I don't think we as a council or a body want to, you know, disrupt the feel of the historic nature of certain signs in this city. But at the same time, there's a lot of time and effort put in. And even though I wasn't up here, I mean, Jeb had substantial coverage of the sign ordinances and the public hearings and the billboards. And I recall it being front-page news back in '09. So I definitely feel that everybody was amply notified. It's whether you wanted to participate or not.
Thank you, Adam.
Although I personally feel like they did a good job back then, I'm open to at least discussion of some of the points. Obviously, I think perhaps some of the height restrictions might be a little bit intense. But, you know, we would hope you'd respect what we come up with.
And just a thought that I would have, as I look at, you know, this process started back in 2004 with a committee that was set up to address a number of issues. And I think Alan was absolutely right. I think the mega signs hit us and we felt we lost control. And this quaint little community having mega signs. We enacted it at the end of 2008 and started the process at the beginning of 2009. 2009, 2017 is quite a period of time. And I would suspect that there would have been some tweaks to that sign ordinance if we would have not had the amortization. If we'd gone in 2009, there probably would have been some tweaks to that process. And so as I hear from a council perspective, here's a thought that I would have. Heather, if we put a pause on where we are right now, would six months give us enough time to look at enhancements and some of the things that may be outdated? Would that give us enough time to come back with some suggestions that might take into account some of the feelings that have been expressed tonight and bring us a little more into the 2017 realm of how signs are done in communities?
So Mayor, six months is a typical public process with hearings that go through Planning Commission and City Council and to get to an ordinance that's enacted with a 30-day period attached to it. So to get to a final product, I don't think six months is enough time. The other thing that I need to consider is our workload and capacity. And if this became a priority for City Council, we would shift everything to make it happen within that timeframe. I guess what I would recommend is if there's an interest in having a dialogue about, is the sign code working for what McMinnville wants it to achieve? That we give it enough time to have that dialogue in a comprehensive way and so that my staff can support it appropriately, that we would need at least 12 months to do so.
And so I would just bring to the council, would you be willing to put the pause button for a 12-month period knowing that the harder work is going to be happening within the six-month period? So that then we can go through the process of the Planning Commission, public hearings and enactment? What are your thoughts?
Yes. Yeah. You looking down here?
I'm just opening it up.
Okay, sure. I feel strongly that we should, we should give it the 12 months. Just from what Heather presented to us earlier tonight, there are definitely some ways to enhance and make it more livable. And we should take a strong look at them myself.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have a question. So this would be building on what was already done?
Yes.
So we'd be looking at changes, not like opening up the whole book, right? So, okay, yes, I'm in support of that then. Because the process was a long one for the first time.
A year seems a long time to me, I'll be honest. Particularly as hard a process as I know our planning department is. I guess I'm willing to give it to you. It just seems like, well, now we're at 10 years. I don't know that things are going to change that much, but.
Is there a way we can block out for certain signs? Like if we know that we're going to focus in on a particular part of this ordinance, that's where we give the timeframe to? There's others that we think could come into compliance fairly easily. Maybe those on top of buildings, for instance, we make that active now. We don't pause that. But some of these other ones that are more height-oriented?
Yeah, so the way that code's written right now is there's a section of the code relative to this amortization program and the need to come into compliance. And it talks about roof signs, freestanding signs and animated signs. So we could amend the code to extend the expiration on when people need to come into compliance for freestanding signs, if that's where we want to go, for freestanding signs and animated signs. We have means of tweaking the code to do that and we would bring that to you before the end of this calendar year because that's what's in there today. We would just need direction from you as to how you want us to proceed.
And in the meantime, all, as has been happening to this point, all new signage and signs that are being changed would have to comply with the existing code.
Yeah, so currently, all new signage that requires a building permit comes through our program and we review it and it meets code. If it doesn't require a building permit, we're not seeing it and that's a reactive process.
So and that, so really what we're looking at is how to implement the changeover of existing signage?
For your direction. So there's two ways we could look at this. We could look at if, ask the question to the community as to what are the issues with signs? And that's a larger dialogue. Or just focus on this amortization piece of the code. It's a small section of the sign code and say, is this what we want to be doing? We can do either or. I think when people talk about clutter that they see on the major commercial corridors, it may or may not be more than just freestanding signs that's creating that effect. And then we would want to have that dialogue. But if it's really just the height and, oh, it's, most signs that are out of compliance are height-related and not actual area-related in terms of the size of the cabinet. If it's really the height is the biggest issue, we can focus on the freestanding signs and start walking through that process.
Well, given the discussion that you had with us tonight, it seems like height was probably the main issue.
For right now, for the signs that are out of compliance with the code that were in this amortization program, so freestanding roof signs and animated signs, height for freestanding signs is the predominant product that's out of compliance. We are getting a lot of feedback right now on other things that are occurring on the commercial corridors with the flag banners and what we call snipe signs and daily display signs and all of that. It's not clear in our code whether those are prohibited or not, so we haven't been enforcing that.
So I think it would be interesting, just if, you can tell me if this is something that we could do, how you've been going through our ordinances and coming up with, like, updating, basically. And the, I have a couple of thoughts. One is that I wouldn't mind seeing from the planning department's perspective, you know, we have new fresh minds, we might have new information of what other communities have done. Just going through and seeing, based on the information we have now, how would the planning department recommend making this the most effective ordinance? And those areas we can bring up as part of the open hearing, we'd have to, as well as amortization. The areas that we feel, like, but to your point, I remember having the conversations and we never did address moving signage, living. Is there a better way to address it now? There might be other areas that we could make that ordinance more effective in our own evaluation of it. Is that something that is doable with, still within that 12 months? Or does that open up a bigger conversation that would take longer?
I think maybe in the interest of time for tonight, maybe the best thing for us to do as a team is to go back and sort of think through what our recommendation would be and bring that to you in a dinner work session at your next meeting.
Right.
Relative to, we understand timeframe not more than 12 months. Getting that message. And then what's our capacity level and what we feel can be achieved within that based on the conversation we've heard tonight? And we can bring you a couple of different paths to consider. But one of the things we are hearing is that there is a value in the city council to look at extending the amortization deadline for 12 months. So we can have that communication with the businesses we're talking to right now because they are all calling us. Chuck spends about 25% of his time on this particular project. So we can have the communication with them that that's the direction we've gotten from City Council and we'll be moving that forward so we can amend the code by the end of the calendar year. And that we'll bring back to you some recommendations for your dinner work session. And you can let us know based on that where you want us to go.
Heather, that sounds perfect because that gives your department an opportunity to kind of look at workload. You know that it's a focus of ours right now. We've had some good discussions of some things that we might want to look at. I like the thought of size and set mac, which we don't address. I like the thought of having multiple signs on longer stretches of shopping centers. There's some things that seem to be more appropriate for today. The one thing that I would share just with the council would be, you know, Kevin brought up the thought, is if we would have enacted this without the amortization process, what would our city look like today? And I would just share with members of the council and our citizens, taking a drive to Newburgh and just looking at the difference of what signs look like there compared to us is a stark difference. And I get a sense that they kind of went really more quickly and didn't listen to citizens as much. But there is a stark difference. I have been to Newburgh probably 10 times in the last two months, looking at signs and trying to get an opportunity to look at their sign ordinance. And there is a difference going down their 99 compared to our 99 in what it looks and what it feels like. So again, if you've not taken that opportunity, I think that's a short travel distance to take a look at a community.
Takes over an hour to get to the other side of Newburgh, do you think?
Does take a while.
Point well taken, though. Thank you.
It substantially, it looks very nice.
It does. So with that being said, Heather, you've got a sense of where we want to be. I've overlooked one thing and Remy, have you been able to?
She ran off. She wasn't able to.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
You two, thank you for coming before us this evening and the thoughtful way you presented that this evening.
Thanks for having us.
Okay. Our next item for discussion tonight is our invitation to citizens for public comment. And anyone that would like to speak on any topic other than a topic that is already on the agenda, a matter that is in litigation, a quasi judicial land use matter or a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date. We are going to do some changes in our public, our public comments section. We are going to limit comments to three minutes with a total of 30 minutes. I don't think we're going to have a problem tonight, but we as a council have determined to do that and we will make notice of that on the agenda moving forward. So this evening, is there anyone that would like to come before the council and share some comments? We'll start with Mark.
Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Mark Davis, 652 Southeast Washington Street here in McMinnville. I actually want to comment on the previous item, but since you didn't call for public comment, I'm just going to sneak it in here real quickly.
That would be fine.
I appreciate the presentation by MIP. I think they were very thoughtful and I don't have any problem with the way it was presented. I just happen to disagree with their perspective. I really feel strongly, as Council President Minky mentioned earlier, that this was discussed extensively. Nine, 10 years ago, I just looked through the News Register archives of all the stories and all the committees and all the time that was spent. And I really think that almost every issue that they raised here was discussed probably 10 times over during that time period. And so I just really am a little frustrated that now here we are at the 11th hour, the thing's about to take effect and now we've got to have another 12 months to go. I guess my question is, what has really changed in nine years? And I would say that probably the biggest change in nine years are these things. Most of us tote these things around or have something in their car that tells us how to get from point A to point B. The need for signs is not as great as it was nine years ago. And I really don't think that these huge tall signs are what this city needs or wants. I'm also concerned about the impact this is going to have on both the Planning Commission and the planning department if you're going to go through a long process. You got, several months ago, you got a report from the planning director about all the things you need to do to get into compliance. I think these are some pretty important things that you need to be doing for the long-term business health of this community. We're going to stop growing if we can't expand the urban growth boundary. And you aren't going to expand the urban growth boundary without taking care of just about everything that's on the list that the planning director gave you. And I really think the planning department and the planning commission should be focusing on those things and not rehashing the arguments from 10 years ago on what we want the signs in this community to look like. I guess my final comment is that, you know, I I guess my final comment is that, you know, I, I think that these signs that are out of compliance by and large are ugly, and I think they're the visual equivalent of yelling in public. I mean, I think that's what their purpose is, and I just think it's time to get them taken down, put something in that's, that was what we agreed to many years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark, very much.
Go ahead, please come up. If you would state your name and sign in.
Sean Rollins. And I'm just a citizen here for... Like I said, I, just a citizen, business owner, and if this is such a great idea, you guys pay for it. Okay? Why are you sending us for, making it hard on businesses that are just barely surviving around here? Now, I want these people to stay here. I don't want them to go away. You know? If they can't, you know, you guys have never taken a marketing class, because if they don't know your products there, you ain't going to get any customers. And that is ridiculous. And if you keep your, if you want your sign ordinance, great, have it for everything that's new, or wait for a Columbus Day storm and do it then. You know? Wait for someone to get damaged, and then in order to fix their sign, they have to replace it to the new ordinance. Everything that's been here for 20 or 30 years should still be here. All right? This is not Lake Oswego. I don't want to live in Lake Oswego. You've seen the guys think that this is Lake Oswego, that you want to be the new wine mecca for the world. I could give a, about wine. I don't care about it. All right? Just a worker, I just want to be in my community that I grew up in. I was born and raised here, and I do not like your, I don't want to call it progressive, but you want to change everything. You know? If you don't like it here, go away. You know? Most of the people that want all these changes came from somewhere else, that they were trying to get away from. Why, if you're trying to get away from it, are you trying to turn us into it? Is what I'm saying. I don't like it at all. And I really think that, you know, people that do without the sign ordinance, they don't care, just like you. You don't care if it costs them $160,000. Well, they don't care either, because they're trying to feed their families. You know, they have no idea how much these signs cost. The billboards are here. They had permits, they were put in. You don't like them? Tough! You know, these people paid money to do it. These people paid money to build their businesses. They followed your rules, and now you're changing the rules again. That's ridiculous. The government is not here to help, they cause problems. They're not here to further our, you know, you guys want to make it so you feel better about your, 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 your community. Well, great. Feel good all you want, don't cost somebody else their happiness or their money. And if it's such an important thing, you pay for it, because I damn well know that you're getting sued for it. And you're going, you think it's going to cost you $160,000? These people, all these people that have these signs, they don't care if they spend thousands and thousands of dollars on lawyers, as long as they tie you guys up in court. So, you know, great, if you want, you want this to be something new, and you want to keep it, you want it to be all new and look new and all pretty and whatever, that's great. As long as they're building them now. So everybody starts from now. Just wait for a storm, a tornado, they actually happen here, and then you can do your thing.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Other comments, ma'am?
My name's Mary Ann Dearing, and I am a commercial property manager. We manage retail centers in Oregon and Washington, and I'm representing Reef McMinnville Plaza, which is one of the big, big mega signs I know we're all talking about. We've managed that project for about eight years for two different owners, and we've lost Fashion Bug, we've lost Pier One. The center has been plagued with vacancy, and about in 2009 is when we started losing everyone. Pier One was my favorite. But now we have an opportunity, we're in negotiations with a big national tenant that's considering coming to McMinnville, and it would add hundreds of jobs. We have a 21,000 square foot vacancy now, and it's a combination of Pier One and Fashion Bug. And it's really important to us, not only as property managers, to fill this space, but it's also to the health of the other tenants. Retail tenants like to be in full centers with other retail users, because they, they get sales off the synergy of the whole center. So, our goal is to get this filled, and the number one thing that new tenants ask for is how much signage do we have? We want signage, we want to be prominent. I totally understand, starting with the, the rules, all new signs have to be conforming, and I understand if, you know, someone drives through a sign and it totally gets obliterated, that the new sign has to be conforming. But in this situation, and I don't understand the new laws or codes that have been designed, but we have several parcels there. So instead of JCPenney and the big McMinnville Plaza sign, we could have probably many signs on all those parcels, which to me seems really messy, because we've got nice green grass there now, we've got the trees, it's really peaceful. You know, we have three entrances. The other thing is JCPenney's is our tenant there, and as you know, nationally, they've been closing stores all over. And we negotiated keeping them. And I know signage was a big deal for them as well. So, I really want us to work together on this, and I apologize that we didn't get involved back then, but the recession was a huge deal, we were all trying to stay alive. But I would really like to see we could work out something to where new signs, new tenants that go in the shopping centers have to conform to these signs, but I really hope you'll consider doing something for the existing landowners, and these signs are amazingly expensive. And we manage retail centers in major cities, but we also do submarkets like this. These are our favorite markets to work in, because it's a real community, and it's hard getting national tenants to come to McMinnville, or to even Salem. We manage a lot in Salem. They all want to be in the big cities. So, we're really working hard, and we actually, on the presentation, just said to be determined on the signage, because we got this letter, and we were like, oh my goodness, this could screw up the whole thing. So we're trying to stall out till we see what happens, before we say how much signage we can give them.
Five seconds.
Okay. That's all I had to say. I appreciate your time, and I hope you'll consider doing the 12-month extension, so we can be more involved.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Anyone else?
This is on a different subject, actually.
That's, that's fine. Go ahead and state your name and sign in.
Okay. My name is Julie Van Dyck White, just a citizen. I'm here because I live at 835 Southwest Blaine, which is right behind El Primo Restaurant. I've been there for 30 years, and we've worked really, really hard on our house. And I in no way blame El Primo for what's going on now, they've been great. Ricky has great employees, they're all trustworthy, polite, you know, I can't say enough good about El Primo. They're not the problem, they're a victim in this too, but the neighborhood has fallen to a lot of drug activity, prostitution even. Excuse me, and it's all coming from the Tremble Rentals, that little bitty trailer park just off of El Primo. It's like when you turn on Edmundston Street and you make another right. And it's funny, you guys are talking about how signs look. Have you ever driven back down in there? It's total Tweekerville in there, it's awful. I can sit on my front porch at any night and watch drug deal after drug deal go down. And by the time I call the police, it's already done and over with. And then I look like a fool and I feel stupid, because they're not there anymore. So, in the last two weeks, I've been threatened. Somebody tried to run me over one night because I saw a drug deal go down, and I'm, I'm just sitting right there on my front porch. And I think two people went to jail that night over that, but then I had another kid threaten to break the windows out in my house, burn my house down. I had another guy, and I think his name is Pride Jones, I think he's pretty well-known, he's got a real history, but he has a pit bull and he beats that dog constantly. And he threatened to unleash his dog on me one night. And this is all on, on my own property, I'm just sitting on my front porch. I don't want to be run out of my neighborhood, I like my house, and I like my neighbors, but I don't like that place, that, you know, the trailer park. It's all old, mostly single wide, really old trailers, and the problem is Tremble, I believe his son has taken over management of that now. And I don't know if he's a bleeding heart or what his deal is, I know his fiancee has been busted for meth twice, so that's not helping. But they're letting in all these people that are just, I mean, like the one guy, he's a registered sex offender, he's wandering around our neighborhood, beating his dog. And I have to be afraid to sit on my front porch, when I've lived there 30 years and worked hard, and all I'm doing is sitting there, and I can't help it if they're doing a drug deal right in front of me. You know, if I take pictures of the license plates, they see me do it, and then they're after me. And so I, I sit there with pepper spray, because I don't know what they're going to do. And...
What, what has been the response as you've?
Well, they did a big bust today, which I was really happy about. I know that, that it's being watched, but the other problem that we have is vehicles. We have these old motorhomes that come out of that trailer park, and, because they're not allowed to park them down there, and they'll park them on the street, and they'll leave them there, and then we get trash, and we get pee buckets sitting on the sidewalk, because the motorhome does, it's not in working order. I get vehicles that have expired plates, and they'll just park them there, and I'm told that they can't tow them, because they're not seeing them drive them there. Well, they didn't push them there, they appear one day and then they drive them off, and then they'll park them, you know, halfway down the block, and they'll sit there for days. Right now, I have just two houses down from me, a Nissan Maxima that's been there two and a half weeks. I called on it over a week ago, I know my neighbors have called on it, it hasn't even been tagged yet, it's still just sitting there. And I know Ricky needs the parking for his employees, and our street just looks cluttered and littered with all these old vehicles that don't run, and garbage all over the place, and we all work hard on our places, and all this stuff is coming from this mobile home park.
We have about five seconds more.
Okay. That's all I have to say, really.
Okay. My, my thought would be, could we have some, from code enforcement or something, possibly hook up with Julie and just kind of see where we're at, so that her concerns might be at least addressed, and then from a council perspective, we can kind of know?
Absolutely, and I, I'd talk to Julie prior to seeing how to make her some, some different information. Yeah, that will help also, and I, there's a couple people with me, actually, if, if Ricky could come up and maybe say something.
Yeah, again, this is an, an open session for comment, if anyone would else, anyone else like to address the council tonight? Go ahead, sir. Again, state your name and sign in, if you would.
Sure. My name is Orion Wise, and I'm here as a property management for McMinnville Town Center. That's the one with McDonald's, Chase, Jimmy John's, Pizza Hut. All right, well, thank you very much for your time. So, I'm the property manager, certified CPM, the company I work with, we've got properties in three states, and although we don't have one of the mega signs that people have been referring to earlier, we are impacted by the ordinance, and more importantly, even irrespective of the cost of any repairs, it impacts the businesses that we lease to. A lot of them, even in the age of cell phones, do get a decent amount of their business from drive-through signage. We're pretty heavily traffic-centered, given our size, so it, it creates an issue for our business owners, so we're here not just to represent the interests of the landlord, but also for our tenants, because it's important that we keep them in business, keep them happy, and keep them in McMinnville. I'd also like to say that, given the framework of this ordinance, it was passed well before we took over this property, but we've been working with Chuck, and he's been very helpful, very friendly, and so I just want to commend Chuck on being good. I've worked with a lot of cities, and that's not always the case. So thank you for that. I would like to say that sometimes with an ordinance like this, it can create a bit of a problem for landlords, in that our leases obligate us to certain signage rights with tenants. So when we sign a lease, especially with a national, we say we're agreeing to certain provisions, we agree to provide signage, here's an exhibit with the signage attached, and that only certain circumstances allow us to violate that, like, say, eminent domain or taking or something. But it can be difficult with tenants, especially in renewal, to have their signage being taken down be a factor. So I know Miriam was mentioning that it can be difficult to attract a new business into a center when signage is an issue. It can also be an issue if someone's considering renewing, and you're going to take their signage down, especially if it's, you know, 30% of their business. So, because the margins can be kind of slim sometimes. So I just wanted to register a, a basic, you know, I'm, I appreciate that this is a city where you do listen to residents, do listen to businesses, and that the recommendations that the presentate, from the presentation before, I'd, I'd like to see the, the city take some of those recommendations into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and I think you've heard that that's what we're going to do on this issue, so thank you.
Thank you.
Again, any, anyone else like to address the council this evening? Again, one more call for anyone that would like to address the council. Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on. This evening, we have a consent agenda that considers the minutes of our June 30th, July 11th, August 8th, August 22nd, 2017 dinner and regular city meeting, council meetings. We have a OLCC liquor license application for the winery located at 2803 Northeast Orchid Avenue, the Kings North Winery, and we have a second OLCC liquor license application for off-premise sales related to a change of ownership for the Paradise Circle K. Would any counselor like to have any items removed from the consent agenda and placed on a regular, on the regular agenda? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion for the consent agenda as presented. And a second. It has been moved by Counselor Rudin and seconded by Counselor Stassen. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any that oppose signify by saying nay. The consent agenda this evening passes unanimously. That takes us this evening to resolution, resolution number 2017-61, resolution approving system development charge exceptions and reduced billing and planning permit fees in excess of $75,000 for 16-unit affordable housing project at 1944 Northeast Baker Street. The total SDC exemptions and permit reduction is $104,304.25. So we'll call on, it looks like Heather, to address us this evening. Go ahead.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. So, as described, this is a resolution in front of you to look at an approval of SDC exemptions and permit fee reductions for 1944 Northeast Baker Street. This is coming to you because in the fall of 2016, you adopted an ordinance in a you adopted an ordinance and a resolution that allowed for these tools to be used as development fee incentives for affordable housing projects. But you also put a threshold on it of $75,000 as an annual allocation and anything over that would come to you as City Council for decision-making. This is the first project for this fiscal year. It is over $75,000 in terms of what it qualifies for, so it is coming to you tonight for consideration. And then if approved, or if approved at an amount equal to, uh, $75,000, any additional project would be coming to you for the rest, rest of the fiscal year as well. So to remind you what the development incentives are, uh, we passed an ordinance that amended the McMinnville City Code to exempt qualifying affordable housing projects from system development charges. Per state law, you can have exemptions for system development charges in terms of qualifying projects. That's a local value system. You can't actually reduce SDC charges though, and so that's why we went into a full exemption process. We also passed a resolution that provided for a 50% reduction in building and planning permitting fees for qualifying projects. Both of them did provide for that annual allocation of $75,000. What can, what is considered a qualifying affordable housing project is housing for low-income residents, which is exempt from real property taxes under state law. Uh, owner occupied or leased to purchase housing for households with an income at or below 80% of the area median income and then homeless shelter developments. For the project in front of you tonight, it actually qualifies under that first criteria. The project is a 16-unit apartment project. The developer is TDJCLC. It's a local developer. The tenant will be Yamhill County Health and Human Services. They're gonna be providing housing for individuals and families that are managing significant mental health issues and maintaining a household income of 50% of area median income or less. It's kind of a unique partnership that Yamhill County Health and Human Services has set up. Uh, they do receive funds to provide shelter for different, um, classifications of individuals and, and provide services as well. They're partnering with the Housing Authority of Yamhill County to, um, utilize Section 8 Vouchers 2 to bring into this program so that they can get, uh, tenants at that 50% AMI level or less participating in independent living situations. Uh, 15 of the units will be, um, managed into this program and then they'll have an onsite manager as well. Um, as I said, they are partnering with the Housing Authority of Yamhill County and you have the attachment in your packet that, um, shows the resolution where the Housing Authority agreed to participate in this project. That was important because we needed to ensure that there was income certification taking place for these units and that it was annually certified as well. Because one of the covenants of the program is that they have to maintain it in this affordable housing program. Uh, the project is exempt from property taxes as it is a county project that's being funded with other public funds. However, because of the way our code is written, it talks about projects that are exempt from property taxes under state law for affordable housing. There's a unique, um, provision in the state law for affordable housing projects that are exempt from property taxes that the developer needs to demonstrate that the savings will go to the end user. So it is reducing the overall, um, rental rate for those units. And, uh, the developer in Yamhill County have worked out a, um, a situation where with these development fee incentives, they are able to reduce the rate of the rental units, uh, by 25% annually. The, there is an impact to city programs, so this is considered forgone revenue, revenue that would otherwise go into the designated programs, um, that are being impacted by this building and planning permit fees as well as the three, uh, system development charge funds that the city manages. These are all programs that are either fee or, um, SDC-supported, so it's not a general fund impact, but there is impact to the programs themselves and, um, and how they're collecting funds to, to, um, to manage and bring those programs to the community. Uh, in terms of the building fund, it will, the overall impact is about $4,800. The planning fund is about $527. Uh, so these are 50% reduction in the permit fees. In terms of the system development charges, it is 100% exemption. The transportation fund would be, the forgone revenue would be $19,000 plus. Wastewater, 338, and the Parks Fund at, uh, nearly $46,000. Counselor Stassen's asked me, what does that mean for those funds? And so when we brought this program to you in the fall of 2016 and talked about the impact of, uh, of, uh, providing these exemptions and fee reductions to these different designated funds, at that time, we were talking about a, um, building permitting level of 127 units. So we estimated based on that. Um, and that's, that's how we came up with the $75,000 because the $75,000 was a 5% impact into those funds based on that permitting level. However, today, um, there is a consideration here. We are not achieving 127 units. You have a report in your packet that shows the last fiscal year in terms of housing units, it was 65. So that's half of the 127. We're actually trending downwards in our permitting levels rather than trending up. Um, we estimated for this fiscal year, though, that we would achieve 115 units. I'm not convinced we're going to get there because of some of our development, um, constraints we have with land supply. However, we do have a couple of divisions coming online. So to give you an idea of what 104,000 would look like, um, to these different funds, I calculated it based on that 65 units from the last fiscal year and then also looked at it from a perspective of 90 units. So we'll achieve a little bit more this next fiscal year with some new developments. Um, and really relative to the Parks Fund, because that's the most impacted. But to let you know, with 65 units, so based on last year's fiscal year, if this is approved, it would be 17% impact on the SDC collections for the transportation fund in terms of what's anticipated. It would be an 18% impact on the wastewater fund in terms of what's, um, anticipated. And it would be a 32% impact on the Parks Fund. That's with the 65 units. If we estimated 90 units as our overall building permitting level for this fiscal year, it would be a 24% impact on the Parks Fund. So much more considerable than our original threshold we had talked about at 5% when we established the $75,000 and that was based on a higher building permitting, permitting level that was coming through the door in terms of a historic trend. So that's one of the reasons why it's written into the code that this comes to you for a final consideration if it does go above the $75,000 level. Um, I did send it out to the department heads who are managing the funds that are impacted. Um, they indicated, uh, so the manager, Mike Bissett, for the transportation fund and wastewater fund felt that, um, those two funds wouldn't be overly impacted by this decision because the transportation bond is picking up some of the capital improvement projects that needed to get done. And the wastewater fund is in a good position right now for cap, to be able to fund capital projects. Susan Muir, the new Parks and Rec Director, did indicate that she had some concerns with the Parks Fund. She's brand new into her position, obviously, and so she wasn't able to have that sort of institutional knowledge for it as well. But so she wanted to share that, that she had some concerns overall in terms of the impact.
Yeah, but I believe Jay, when we talked about this earlier on, had expressed some concerns also.
Yes. So the reason, in fact, the original threshold that was brought to city, that was originally dialogued when it was going through the Affordable Housing Task Force, was 150,000. Um, and we were talking about that internally as department heads and impacted programs. And, uh, the previous Parks and Rec Director, Jay Pearson, did say, "I have significant concerns about that impact." And that's why it got reduced to 75. But again, like I said, when we were forecasting permitting trends, we were expecting to trend at the same level we had been trending at. And we are trending right now at 50% of that forecast, so.
Adam? So what's in front of us, uh, we do the 104 or we don't do anything? Or we're doing-
So what you have in front of you, and I might defer this to, um, our city attorney, but it's Section 3.10.060 B2. And I have the language. It's the annual allocation to affordable housing exemptions will not exceed 75,000 unless, unless it is approved by action of the McMinnville City Council. So you do have an opportunity to say, we're just gonna keep it at 75,000 across the board.
My only question about that is you mentioned that it, uh, prohibited us from reducing SDC amounts. So wouldn't that be what we would be doing if we did 75,000 and they-
No, so what, what we would do is figure out how to apply SDCs to units.
Oh, gotcha.
There's, there's 16 units in the project.
So there's a way to do it without violating-
Yeah, we would have to, I would, again, defer to legal counsel on those questions, but, um, that is how some other communities have done it, yes.
So, say theoretically, the Gospel Rescue Mission wanted to pull a permit in March and they wanted SDC forgiveness. Since we're already at the 75,000 threshold, anything, the rest of this fiscal year will come in front of us?
It will come in front of you. And I do know, right now, we have, we are sitting on, um, we expect, it may, it may have already come in the door and they haven't applied for this program yet, but we would expect them to. Habitat for Humanity has three units that they're going to pull permits on.
And this might be more of a David question, but do we, for this specific application, do we have to go 75 or nothing? Or could you say we're at 50% of the permit fees? So we want to be at 50% of the threshold for this project?
Not, not having anticipated that question or reviewed this particular provision of the code um, in anticipation of that question, I, I'd be reluctant to give you an off-the-cuff answer right now. I need to look into that deeper.
Yeah, and so what are your actions in front of you tonight? So you have three things you could be looking at for pass. You could approve the resolution as is. You could amend it. You could request more information and we can defer the action to a future meeting. Or you can deny it altogether. Um, if there is an interest in, in us exploring opportunities to, you know, offer partial, um, development fee incentives to a project, we could look at that. And come back at a future meeting with a recommendation.
My, my personal opinion is, given the budget situation that we're in, is that we should be cognizant of that threshold that was initially set. And we should also leave something on the table for those coming through the rest of this fiscal year. I don't feel giving one person that virtually has guaranteed occupancy, um, the whole pie is the, the way I would like to go as a counselor. But I, I do support the project and I love what they're doing. I just don't think that they should get everything on the table.
Any other comments?
I agree. I, I feel like requesting more information. I had similar concerns. I, I don't feel comfortable going over that limit considering the data that we have now. Um, and I also am a little concerned about using all of that incentive money for one project and then not having anything else for any of the good projects coming through. So I'd love to see some other, what our alternatives are, maybe just more information about that.
Yes, I'd like to know what the commitment level we have, given what we had originally brought up. But I'm, I am definitely concerned about going over the 75.
Yeah, the, the parameters that we put into this when we initially looked at it and what we were willing to forego, uh, it's not coming up to that. And so the impact is so much deeper. And again, it is a focus on our part. You know, we want affordable housing and we want to give the help that we can. But when it starts impacting, uh, the running of programs within the city beyond what we thought, that's a concern. Mayor? Alan?
Put in my two cents here. I had a couple of questions and then a comment. One is that the managing partner would be who? And they would be managing the, uh, income levels of the occupants?
The Housing Authority of Yamhill County.
Okay. And, uh, so this is not just an affordable housing project. This is a low-income and, uh, if philosophically very worthy of supporting the community, in my opinion. Uh, where, uh, the ones that are making less money are actually buoyed up by the whole community and with dollars, basically. Um, so philosophically, that fulfills the mission of the Affordable Housing Task Force in a way. And so, uh, I do have my questions about the amount. But as far as a worthy, uh, low-income housing, I don't see how it can be any better, uh, for the purposes of the city of providing that type of housing.
I would agree that, I, I fully support the concept of the affordable housing aspect of it and that's why all this was put in there. And I don't necessarily have a bad time giving them the whole 75. It's just an issue of, you know, I think maybe Habitat should wait till next year to submit then, if that's the case.
But you'll know, we, we know there'll probably be some other opportunities next year that if we've got scarce dollars, then you can't push these projects out because that's not what we want to do also.
So, I, I mean, there is a certain argument to be made that maybe we need to step out there and, and do something because we really have done very little in the way of density and dealing with affordable housing issues. I just, I just am a little concerned about the chunk it's gonna take out of Parks.
Yeah, and I, I have no, no ifs about the project or the developer that's doing it or anything like that. I mean, all, all the merits there for the dollars, it's, I just want to make sure that we, the city can extend the hand to, to other affordable housing and we don't have all our eggs in one basket because I, I do feel that there's gonna be other opportunities on the horizon.
And from the perspective of going forward in the future, I mean, I'm sure this isn't the last time that that would come up. Maybe just look at whether or not a different structure would enable us to spread our dollars more effectively. Just more information to see if there's a better structure for the program that doesn't. Because the point of waiting, Habitat waiting for the next year and the very beginning of the next year, having all the dollars gone, that might not, that might not meet what we wanted to do with those dollars.
No, I, I appreciate that. I, I, you can look at this from, I mean, when I read this earlier today, I just going, oh, golly, you know?
With, with a-
Because I'd really like to see it happen, yes. But I am very concerned from a strategic standpoint of our finances. You know, I just don't like to take us aback what we'd already-
Or until we at least go through our strategic, uh, process and understanding what that vision, what we're looking for down the road, it, it may be-
Yeah, it's kind of rough to put them off that long, but.
Heather, comments?
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is, um, we will do some analysis as to the different types of opportunities available to you for decision-making. You want to support the project. What, what would be the different levels to consider and what does the law, law allow or not allow? We can bring that back to you at a future city council meeting. Um, and then I will visit with, uh, uh, project proponents to see impact to that as well. Uh, the irony of all this is when we were talking about this in the fall, we were talking about what if a big project comes in and absorbs the whole allocation? And at that time, there hadn't been any big projects in the history in like 15 years of a trend that we looked at. Um, and we thought, well, that'd be a great problem to have. So, so here we go. It's our first one. Um, but anyways, we'll, we'll come back to you with some, we'll, we'll do some research and come back to you with more information and, and as a future agenda item for this. And then for, you know, if, if there is consideration of a finite amount, uh, some communities have done a competitive process at the beginning of the fiscal year. Um, to, for, most projects are in development or at least conceptual phases and can apply and then you can allocate across the board through that process too, so.
I would be interested in seeing what, uh, you had mentioned, the impact, uh, with the developer has on the reduced amount.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Potential reduced amount.
And that might, that might educate us also about what, what's the threshold at which it really is helpful? Like, I mean, we don't want to go below, below a threshold where it's really not very, I mean, doesn't have a big impact, so.
Yeah, the whole idea is to get people to want to do this.
Yeah.
But it's, can we do that with like less than the full amount? So that would be helpful information.
Okay.
So, thank you, Heather, if you'd bring that back to us for consideration.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, that takes us to our ordinances this evening. Uh, the first reading with possible second reading of ordinance 5036. An ordinance approving a zone change from R1, single-family residential to R4, multiple-family residential on an approximate 2.2 acres of land and a planned development amendment to expand an existing planned development overlay to encompass two parcels for a total of 1.11 acres of land. And so, um, we'll, um, we will now consider the matter of ordinance number 5036. Does any, um- Does any counselor object to having this ordinance read by title only? Hearing none, we will have the city attorney please read the ordinance by title only.
This is ordinance number five zero three six, first reading. An ordinance approving a zone change from R1, single-family residential to R4, multiple-family residential on approximately 0.22 acres of land and a planned development amendment to expand an existing planned development overlay to encompass two parcels for a total of 1.11 acres of land.
Thank you, David. Chuck, if you'd present to the council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Here again, multiple times in front of us tonight.
Yep. So this is, as David described, two applications, a zone change and a planned development amendment request. It's on a property located at seventeen thirty Southwest Second Street. This is the location of the property. It's on the south side of Second, very close to the intersection of Cypress and Second Street. So, in detail, the land use request before you are a zone change on the northern parcel and a planned development amendment on both parcels in question, which make up the entire development site. This image here shows the existing zoning of the property on the left-hand side. The northern parcel is currently zoned R1, single-family residential. If approved, it would be rezoned to R4, multiple-family residential. And the planned development amendment would be amended to encompass both of the parcels, resulting in them both being zoned R4 and one planned development applying to the whole development site. Just for some background, the existing planned development that applies to that southern parcel was adopted back in nineteen eighty. It rezoned the southern parcel to R4 at that time and adopted the planned development overlay. The planned development at that time limited the development of the site to no more than five dwelling units. And that was based on a sewer capacity study that was done at the time that had concerns with development densities on the west side of McMinnville. And, so that was the reason for the limitation at that point in time. There was also some requirements for infrastructure improvements and easements to occur on that site. Some of those infrastructure improvements have already occurred. Apperson Street on the south side of the property was identified as a street at that point in time, and that obviously has been constructed and is a fully functioning street. And all the other easements that would be required would happen during the building permit process at this point in time. So I'll walk through the zone change on the northern parcel. Looking through the criteria that apply to that zone change request, the proposed amendment has to be consistent with comprehensive plan, goals, and policies. So there are a number that are included in the decision document that's included in your packet. In particular, Chapter Five, Housing and Residential Development, has a number of goals and policies that relate to this request. Promoting development of affordable quality housing for all city residents, promoting a residential development pattern that's land-intensive and energy-efficient, that provides urban levels of public and private services. This site, an increase to R4 would allow for more dense development that is more land-intensive. It's serviceable by existing public and private utilities. And it also will allow for some unique development techniques to be employed, which I'll get to in the planned development discussion. There are also a number of factors to take into consideration when you're looking at rezoning something to R4, higher-density residential. The first one doesn't really apply, but the applicant has argued that the other locational factors better suit this property. So the area can be buffered by landscaping, and this site can be, and a condition of approval has been included, that a landscaping plan be submitted to provide buffering of the site from the adjacent low-density residential areas. The site does have access from a major collector, or actually a major arterial street on Second Street, which is another one of the criteria. The site is not subject to any development limitations. It's flat. There is no topography or anything that would limit development of the site. Existing facilities have the capacity to support the type of development that's being proposed. And the other three factors to consider are kind of locational considerations in terms of other amenities that are within a certain distance of the site, so. Public transit should be in close proximity. Yamhill County Transit Route Number Two currently runs on Second Street hourly for most of the day, directly adjacent to the site, so you can't get much closer to transit. There is an existing commercially zoned property on the corner of Aggie and Second. There is no commercial services there today, but the zoning and the comprehensive plan designation allows for commercial services to locate there, again, in close proximity to the site. And there are also park facilities within a quarter-mile of the site. A future identified park in the Parkmaster Plan and Quarry Park. There's also the West McMinnville Linear Park to the east, and the west-side pedestrian and bike pathway is also a little further to the west along Second. Another criteria for a zone change is that the proposed amendment is orderly and timely, considering the pattern of development in the surrounding area. And this area does include a wide range of housing development patterns. There are other R4 development pattern-type product in the immediate area, immediately to the east. And south is an existing apartment complex. There are other apartment complexes across Second Street. And there are also duplex developments further east or along Aggie Street. So, the proposed zoning to a multiple-family residential is not inconsistent with the surrounding area. There are that type of development product in that area. And then the final criteria is that utilities and services can be provided efficiently to the site. Engineering Department has reviewed this, all the utility providers have as well, and have no concerns with providing services to the site to support the higher-density development that would be proposed. So now I'll jump into the planned development review. So, this would apply to the entire site. This is just an image of the overall development plan, which the applicant has proposed and would become binding on the site. So, in looking at a planned development, there should be special physical conditions or objectives of a development to warrant a need to depart from the standard zoning regulations. For this planned development, one of those things is that this site is somewhat unique in the fact that it's very narrow and very deep. So in order to efficiently develop the lot, the applicant's proposing a planned development to allow for multiple duplex units on one single parcel, which normally wouldn't be allowed as a multiple-family development. And they are proposing to spread them out throughout the sites, that they aren't clustered, and there isn't a huge building mass in any portion of the site. And their argument for that is that it will provide a transition from the apartment complex to the east, down to the single-family residences to the west. So staff feels that that design is a good fit for this location considering the surrounding development and the unique size of the lot. Again, the development can't be inconsistent with comp plan policies. I mentioned before the housing policies that support higher-density development, and those meet this site as well and the overall planned development site. The proposed density ends up being eighteen point nine units per acre, which falls into the R4, high-density residential type density. And it also meets those locational requirements for higher-density residential, like I went through before with the zone change request. Just to touch again on that density limitation that exists to that current, on the current planned development, that was based on a density study that was done at that time that found that there was issues with capacity. That resulted in the adoption of this west-side density policy, which limited density to no more than six units per acre on the west side of town. The policy was adopted in nineteen eighty-five, shortly after the planned development, and that, but since that time sewer capacity issues have been addressed. So like I said, the engineering department doesn't have any concerns with servicing the site. But there is also some language in there that allows an exemption from the west-side density policy if something's within a quarter-mile of transit, which this is. So, it would be exempt anyway, but just for your information, there are no sewer capacity issues that would apply to this site. Another thing with planned developments that has been a focus lately is common open space within the development. The applicant is proposing to add some open space to this site, and worked with staff on revising the site plan to do that. They're proposing to add a common open space in the area provided here. This is the southernmost grouping of duplex units. They're proposing to construct just one single standalone unit and have a open space to the north of that, which is somewhat centrally located in the site. It equates to about five percent of the overall site being a common open space. And there is a condition of approval that requires that they provide, you know, recreation and open space amenities suitable for the type of development that they propose. And I should mention, as part of that, they're requesting reduced setbacks, which can be approved as part of the planned development, of ten feet for their rear yard and fifteen feet for their front yard, and those are reflected in the site plan that's been submitted. Internal traffic system within the site and the surrounding area should be addressed with the planned development. They're proposing a one-way through, drive aisle through the site with access from Second Street, exiting onto the south onto Apperson Street. The reasoning for that was to reduce traffic impacts on Second Street. It's very close to that Cypress Street intersection, and the applicant felt that it would be better to have traffic distribute through the site and then use those existing intersections instead of introducing a new turning movement near that intersection that is already quite busy. So, that's what they're proposing. They also meander the drive aisle through the site, which allows for more distribution of the dwelling units within the site, and it should slow traffic through the site too with those turning movements that are going to be required. Other planned development review criteria are that it can be, provide access to adjoining parcels. The surrounding area is fully developed, so it's not really applicable in this situation. The plan also has to be completed in a reasonable amount of time. We've included a condition of approval to require that improvements be completed within a certain timeframe, just to ensure that it will be, and the applicant has every intent of moving forward, but just to include that in the process so that we don't have a planned development that becomes outdated. So if something did take longer than the timeframe here, a new plan would need to be submitted for the site. The streets in the surrounding area have to be able to accommodate the traffic from a planned development. So the applicant did provide a traffic study analyzing the surrounding intersections, and based on the number of trips that would be generated from the number of units that would be increased on the site. You can see here on the left the existing conditions, and on the right a summary of opening year operations. And the surrounding intersections, based on the fifteen additional trips that would be created from this new development at the peak hour, are pretty minimal. They result in very minimal increases in delay and level of service at the surrounding intersections, so. Engineering has no concerns with the additional trips being added to the surrounding street network, based on the analysis that was provided. And this specifically takes into account that one-way traffic movement and those movements on the Second Street. So based on the information provided and in your packet in the decision document, staff and the planning commission is recommending approval of the zone change with the conditions included in the decision document as before today. And I'd be happy to welcome any questions you might have.
Thank you, Chuck. Discussion among council? Any questions for Chuck or any?
I've got one.
Go ahead, Alan. Kelly, do you?
Okay.
I just to comment, I think it's an excellent example of a high-density housing development that we could easily place.
And in an infill that I think just kind of adds to that area.
Makes sense.
I'd agree.
Yeah, I like it. I like the zone change, planned development. I like the meandering aspect of it. Like the buffering and, of course, the landscape requirements that'll be due, but yeah, I agree. It's a good infill project. It's great to fill a need. I did have one question on the planning commission meeting, and if there was any direct opposition to it, and if their objections were addressed by staff?
Yeah, there was some public testimony received at the public hearing. Some of the concerns were with added density in this area and impacts to schools. That's not really something that's a consideration in these types of requests based on our review criteria. There were also concerns with traffic, because it is a busy area. Just adding more development to this area will add additional vehicles there. But based on the analysis that was provided, staff feels comfortable with the proposal and the fact that it won't have any serious impacts on the surrounding intersections and traffic movements in the area. There is a, based on the existing development, they could construct six dwelling units on this overall site, so the overall increase is only by about fifteen, well, fifteen dwelling units, so. It's not a substantial increase. They could, based on the size of the lot, I believe, develop up to thirty-six dwelling units, just based, if it was all zoned R4, based on the size and the density limitations per dwelling unit. So, what they're proposing isn't the maximum that could be developed here. So it isn't quite as much of an increase in traffic as could occur.
So the way it stands now, there's, without the zone change or planned development, five units could actually go on there today.
Correct, yeah. Plus the one, there's a single-family home that exists on the northern parcel today. So six total on the entire site.
Thank you.
Kevin?
For the parking, are they going to be, are they going to be owned by the adjacent homes? Are they going to be assigned ownership to those parking spaces? Do you know?
I don't know the details on that. It's an overall site, so similar to an apartment complex, there's parking for the development site. I don't know how the applicant intends to, if they intend to assign those specifically, but they are providing more parking than what is required for a multiple-family residential.
These are going to be rental units, not, not single-family?
Correct, yeah. They're in the form of a duplex-type design, but they will be a rental community.
The applicant is here if you have any questions.
Yeah? Ray, are they similar to your units by Downey Middle School? Okay. And, yeah, the the road is, I love the meandering aspect. I think that creates better livability for the tenants there, but is that, I can't tell how wide that is. Can a garbage truck still get through there, an ambulance, all that kind of stuff?
I believe it's twenty-four feet wide, the drive aisle. And the turning movements were reviewed by the fire department, and they provide enough of a radius for the fire truck to maneuver through there. The applicant did already come in for a pre-application meeting and has been reviewed by all of the various city departments, so.
The streets meet city standards and everything.
Correct, yeah. And it is a one-way aisle, so that can be a little narrower, but it's twenty-four feet, so it's wide enough for a fire truck. And the turning movements have already been reviewed by the fire marshal.
The reason why I was asking about the parking is, I mean, there's definitely ample parking here, but some of these instances, especially see this in Portland-Bieberton area where you have, somebody might have three or four cars, and they have guests over, and so it starts to really crowd in on the spaces. And without direct ownership or assigned parking spaces, it's difficult for the adjacent homeowners to be able to take any action and get those cars removed off. So they don't have to park at the end of the street because somebody parked in their space. There's just some nuances in the towing laws where in that case, they would be able to initiate a tow to get the car pulled out so they could park in their spot. So having that, like, form of ownership for that space allow them to do that.
I understand your concern, Kevin, but I think that's more of a private enterprise and a management thing and not a policy decision?
No, I'm just giving them the advice. Just, I'm not going to change the policy, I'm just saying that's... Yeah, you can always make that, I mean, you can be informal about it, of course. I'm not going to tell you to do it, but if you see the problem, and that's the nuance, it's a fairly new law in the towing laws, because you can no longer just patrol through and just, you know... Yeah, trying to live in a tight quarter can be complicated sometimes.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a motion to pass ordinance number forty- I'll call for a motion to pass ordinance number 4036 to a second reading.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President Menke and seconded by Council Rudin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by saying nay. Ordinance number 5036 passes by a vote of five to five on the first reading and will be brought to a second reading on September. The, excuse me. City Attorney to read the ordinance again by title only.
So this is a second reading of ordinance number 5036 and ordinance approving a zone change from R1 single-family residential to R4 multiple-family residential on approximately 0.22 acres of land. And a plan unit development amendment to expand an existing planned development overlay to accomplish two parcels for a total of 1.11 acres of land.
So I'll ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5036.
I'll move.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselor Jeffries. Garvin and seconded by Council President Menke. All, I'll turn it to the city attorney to poll the council.
Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Jeffries?
Aye.
Counselor Rudin?
Aye.
Counselor Stassens?
Aye.
Counselor Menke?
Aye.
And ordinance number 5036 is adopted by a vote of five to five. Okay, takes us to our second ordinance. First reading with possible second reading of an ordinance, number 5037. An ordinance approving text amendments to Chapter 10 Citizen Involvement and Planned Amendment of the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan. We will now consider the matter of ordinance 5037. Does any counselor object to having the ordinance read by title only? Hearing none. Will the city attorney please read the ordinance by title only?
This is a first reading of ordinance number 5037 and ordinance approving text amendments to Chapter 10 Citizen Involvement and Plan Amendment of the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan.
And we'll call on Heather to make a presentation.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. I am, I have a visitor from a virus. So my medication seems to be wearing off, so I'm going to try to work my way through this. But if it goes a little wonky, that's why. So this is ordinance number 5037. It is a comprehensive plan text amendment. It's being recommended to you by Planning Commission and it was a staff initiative, so we consider this a legislative process. And it's to look at a comprehensive plan text amendment for Chapter 10 of the Comprehensive Plan, which deals with citizen involvement. It is something that we've been talking about as a city for about the last eight months to put this together. What the ordinance does is it amends Chapter 10 by adding a goal. So our comprehensive plan chapters all have goals, policies and proposals. The goals are what we're trying to achieve. The policies is how the city is going to operate and sets the foundation for the zoning ordinance and other documents that the city uses to move forward the city policies. And then proposals are interesting. They're also in the comprehensive plan and there is sort of direction on moving forward in terms of either work product or programs that we want to implement in the future. So this adds one goal, it amends three policies, adds four policies and then adds two proposals. The other thing it does is it ensures that McMinnville is compliant with state law, which is always good. It provides for a more diverse citizen involvement program than what we have today. And it requires an annual evaluation of that citizen involvement program. So it requires us to look at it and say, is this working, not working? If not, let's tweak it and move it in a different direction. So the whole intent of this is just to have a better citizen involvement program. As we've talked about in the past, Oregon land use goal number one is citizen involvement. There is an administrative rule that describes how each government body is going to do that. For the larger portion of it, it means that we're going to appoint a citizen involvement committee. We're going to assure that we have two-way communication with citizens. So an opportunity for citizens to participate, but also an opportunity for us to provide information to citizens. And one of our policies that you'll see that we're recommending as additional policy plays into that, the communication piece of it. Provides the opportunity for citizens to influence and be involved. Make sure that our technical information is available and readable and so that people can understand it and there's another policy that looks at that. Provides an opportunity for feedback and then provides the need for cities to financially support the citizen involvement program. So the goal that's being recommended to add to the plan reads to make every effort to engage and include a broad cross-section of the community by maintaining an active and open citizen involvement program that is accessible to all members of the community and engages the community during development and implementation of land use policies and codes. This is relative to that discussion we've had in the past where we've said we really want to make sure that our committee and volunteer process represents a demographic cross-section of those who live here and that we're making every effort to reach out and include them in our discussions. The changes to the three policies is relative to the fact that we currently have a planning commission and we have a standing citizen advisory committee. The standing citizen advisory committee hasn't met in a long while. But they were assigned the the charge of being proactive and doing long-range planning projects. Therefore, the planning commission wasn't moving that forward. So because we didn't have this citizen advisory committee being in an active role, we weren't moving any of that long-range planning program forward. At the same time, we had passed a resolution that appointed the planning commission as the official citizen involvement committee for the city. So it just created this duality of confusion. So what this, these changes in the three policies do is they essentially say that the planning commission is the committee for citizen involvement for the city of McMinnville. So it reaffirms what was passed by resolution and just provides that language and the necessary policies. Then we add four policies. So one of them is that we'll continue to engage citizens in a community advisory position for input on the major elements of the comprehensive plan. And we want to make sure that the CACs is what we're going to call them. And they'll be project-specific and they can be ad hoc committees or they can be appointed by the city council. That they're comprised of volunteers representing a broad cross-section of the community to provide input on every major comprehensive planning effort and other related land use planning matters. So that's setting up those project-specific advisory committees that we've talked about. We're also recommending that we have a policy that says that we'll strive to include youth members on city committees involved in land use planning and work with the McMinnville School District, local private schools and service groups to encourage that. We have been bringing to you code and bylaws for our committees that also encourage that as well. And we're working, reaching out right now to our different partners to see how we can engage youth in our programs. That was another policy that's being recommended for addition to this chapter is that the city McMinnville shall ensure that technical information is available to citizens in an understandable form. And when needed, provide translations of them to non-English speaking members of the community. So that's responding to that specific regulation that's in the Oregon administrative rule that says we need to provide information in a way that people can understand it. And we're not always cognizant of that as a city. As a local government, we have our own language that doesn't necessarily translate to the neighbor on the porch. And so what we want to do is make sure that everything we put out there is something that our neighbors on the porch can understand and in the language that they can understand it. And then the last one is that we shall allocate adequate human, financial and information resources for the citizen involvement program. That's responding right into that administrative rule that we need to comply with. So the two proposals that are being recommended to add to this plan, which doesn't have any proposals in this particular chapter is that we will periodically evaluate the city citizen involvement program and make adjustments as needed to improve its effectiveness. And that we'll have the committee for citizen involvement, which is the planning commission, report at least annually to the city council to evaluate the effectiveness of the city's citizen involvement efforts. So the planning commission, we're going to bring you code revisions, just like we have for our other committees that suggests the planning commission do an annual report with the city council. And in that effort, when we're preparing for that, we'll also go through an evaluation of the citizen involvement program over the past year and bring to you what we feel is working and not working with that. Within our department, we're going to start setting up standard operating procedures. And a part of that will be developing a, an operating procedure for reaching out to include people in these project advisory committees and what that should look like. And then also a citizen involvement plan. So what we should be doing in terms of how to communicate to people to get them involved, let them know the information that's out there, the different types of tools to use. We want to do that as a standard operating procedure rather than codified because those tools are always moving and evolving and we want to make sure that we're nimble enough to move with that. So we do have recommended project advisory committee structure that we're going to put into these standard operating procedures. It's not part of your comp plan text amendments tonight, but I wanted to make sure that you were aware of it because we're changing the structure of our citizen advisory committees by not having a standing committee, but having this project-specific committees. So it's a project advisory committee comprised of two parts, a citizen advisory committee and a technical advisory committee. And the city's done this in the past with some larger planning efforts. The Northeast Gateway District is a more recent one, as well as the transportation bond issue. And it's a very common practice in many communities. The citizen advisory committee would be comprised based on whatever the content of the project is. A liaison from impacted commissions and committees so they can be providing information back and forth to our other volunteers. That we have family representatives there. So typically, these volunteer efforts are people who have the time to participate and we're not capturing some of our large user base, which is families with kids. And so we want to make sure we're reaching out and having that voice at the table too. We also want to make sure we have someone representing the accessibility community moving forward, that we want to have youth representatives, retirees, singles, our partners as appropriate, and then people representing the community demographics. And that will be a continual update of what's happening in the census data and what we're seeing come through in terms of our data analysis that we're going to start doing on a more regular basis to understand who is our community and what's comprising our community so we can make sure our committees look like that. And then the technical advisory committee is really where your staff experts are and your partner agency experts. So that could be either state representatives, regional representatives, or even local representatives that we want to bring in. And then again, regional experts, because we want to make sure that we're plugging in regionally and statewide as well with our efforts. So that's the ordinance that's in front of you tonight. It's, it doesn't require a public hearing unless you choose to do that and schedule it for a future meeting. It is a recommendation from the planning commission. We did not have any public testimony and opposition. I believe Mark did testify in support of it, Mark Davis. And he also is a member, current member of the citizen, standing citizen advisory committee and has been part of the review process for these text amendments, as well as the other member that currently resides in the city. Other than that, all the other positions on that committee are vacant at this moment, so.
Any questions for Heather from council?
I don't.
Alan?
First of all, in agreement with Mark Davis on this, very comprehensive. It's very, very impressive. One question that popped in my mind, had to pick one thing out of 30 great things that have been up there is you had translation for Spanish-speaking citizens. Where does ASL come in, American Sign Language? Is that would be an as-needed basis or?
Yeah, so that's a great question, counselor. It is an as-needed basis. And one of the other things that we're working on, so that's that laundry list that Mark referenced of coming into compliance, is an ADA transition plan. And how do we make sure that we're providing the services that we are required as a city to provide? So we have vendors set up for these different services. We want to make sure that those contracts are continually updated, that we're connecting with the vendors and that we make them available as appropriate. We're going to start our, one of our new building inspectors, we've hired Robert Ragers, who I hope you've met. People really enjoy him. He's also certified as an ADA coordinator, so he's gone through the national course. So he's going to help lead an effort for us to move into this ADA transition planning effort. And we hope to put that together and launch it in January.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other questions? Well, congratulations, because I know as we're going through the code, that was a priority, Heather. And with all the many other things on the plate to be able to start this process. Thank the staff. I know you guys are working really, really diligently, so. Without other comments, I'll ask for a motion to pass ordinance number 5037 to a second reading.
I'll move. Second.
Okay, it has been moved by Counsel Rudin and seconded by Counsel President Menke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Okay, ordinance number 5037 passes on its first reading unanimously. I will now ask the city attorney to read the ordinance again by title only.
This is a second reading of ordinance number 5037 and ordinance approving text amendments to Chapter 10 Citizen Involvement and Plan Amendment of the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan.
I will ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5037.
So I'll move.
Second.
It has been moved by Counsel President Menke and seconded by Counselor Stassens. We will ask the city attorney to poll the council.
Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Jeffries?
Aye.
Counselor Rudin?
Aye.
Counselor Stassens?
Aye.
Counselor President Menke?
Aye.
Ordinance number 5037 is adopted by a vote of five to five. That takes us to advice and information items this evening. Counselors, any reports from committee assignments or board assignments? We'll start with Adam and just kind of move this way.
We have a Y Com meeting on Thursday, but nothing exciting. And looking forward to going to the airshow next week.
Okay. Kevin? Kelly?
Homeless committee meeting yesterday and it was interesting. Lot of things kind of coming together, but it seems like we still need a little more coordination and understanding on everybody's part to make it work.
Okay, and that was Affordable Housing Subcommittee on Homelessness, correct?
Right, that's correct.
Wendy?
We had an urban renewal advisory meeting and it was very productive. We had a couple of good applications that were passed. We had some good discussion. We have a parking study that's coming, that's done. And I was looking at when, it's the end of this month. What day is it?
Tuesday, September 19th.
19th. 3:30 here. And so that should be really good. We got a little preview, but the full presentation will be really interesting. So and they're also going to be presenting some options for us to look at, so we're excited about that.
Thank you. Alan?
Well, we had a great Historic Landmarks Committee meeting. Is it always the fourth Wednesday? At the CDC? It's really good. That's a really good committee. They're experienced. They've been together for a while. They have good knowledge. And one of the issues that was brought up was the Farnham Electric sign. On how to make that, or how to name that a historic sign so that it can do some changing and be placed in a different position. So that was, that was really good. Well, Wallo Farnham was there and gave a history of that sign, which goes back a long way. It used to be on Third Street. So anyway, I was really impressed with that committee. A lot of experience. Joan Drapkin is the committee chair. She's been involved in land use matters for quite some time. So I was very impressed and then Chuck is involved in that also. The Airport Commission, due to lack of quorum, is, commission meeting has been postponed till, I believe, October. So then we have a McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force coming up. Is that the 19th? Fourth of Wednesday? It's a busy, I remember that, in the morning, afternoon, okay. So fourth Wednesday every month.
And then the only thing that I would have, everything else has been, um, reported on. On, uh, Saturday, September 23rd, uh, we will be having the bypass celebration, um, ahead of completion of the bypass, but an opportunity, and our chamber is, um, coordinating that, and, uh, so more information, I'll make sure that Joya gets information out to every member of the, uh, the council. Uh, again, a good day, bring family, you can walk, you can drive, or not drive, but ride, there will be, uh, um, ODOT is kind of putting the party on, so to speak, but you'll have an opportunity to see what's, what's coming down the road. Uh, let's turn to department heads.
Did you want to talk about city club first before you turn to department heads?
Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, Jeff and I today had an opportunity to, uh, attend city club and do the State of, uh, of the City, which is an annual report that's done. They open their season in September, and, uh, we probably had, uh, no, I'd say 75 to 100 in attendance, uh, just a lively group. Uh, we had, uh, approximately, uh, 50 minutes to make some presentations. I did more of a global kind of, uh, sharing the, the responsibilities of the council and the responsibilities of Jeff and staff, um, and then talked about committees and, um, um, our, uh, community involvement, and then briefly went over some of the successes that we'd had in 2016, and then I set Jeff up then to, uh, share, um, what's been happening since he's been here. So Jeff, any thoughts from your perspective?
So it was, uh, an unusual exercise for me, I'm more used to the state of the city being kind of a formal, driven by the organization event and, and less sponsored by a community meeting, so it was a, it was kind of an, an interesting and nice change. It was probably better attended than most state of the cities I've been to in my career, and certainly, uh, more interactive. So I, I thought it was a great opportunity for folks to get to ask us questions, um, I think most of the questions we were able to answer or defer to Susan, Heather, to work on afterwards.
So again, I just, uh, again, I'll tell you one thing that I tried to share just, uh, briefly is concerns I had coming in as, uh, the mayor, and where I sat today, and I think one of the things that I acknowledged is how Jeff has been able to bring, uh, department heads and staff together and rebuild trust. Um, I, I'm not sure everybody understood where I was coming from, but that was my big, our big concern, and, and just wanted to acknowledge those efforts, uh, along with all the other many things that were on the plate, transportation, um, we had some really thoughtful questions that came to us, and again, it was just, it was a, a fun opportunity, so thanks for reminding me on that, Jeff. Uh, so let's go ahead. Susan, any report from Parks?
Thank you. I'm here calling, uh, we adopted a patron code of conduct for the community center. Uh, the community center is a safe and welcoming place for everybody, but we occasionally have behaviors that we need to, um, try and deal with in the community center, and so I contacted Jenny Parker, and she, we have like copies of the code that she has at the library, um, we posted it for several weeks, and then we admitted that the community center reopened after the repairs, so I have copies like that, anybody like, and then also, Mayor, you mentioned this morning about the McMinnville First Core Church Volunteer Project, it's gathering, there's more than 40 volunteers out there with the weekend, I'm really doing something that I understand is a 13-year tradition of helping get the park ready and buttoned up for the winter, and so that's a huge thank you to that group for helping with the parks, I mean, it's not just a, it's a thing.
Yeah, that was a fun activity, got a lot done, a lot accomplished, so thanks for giving us the opportunity. Uh, Scott?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and council members, things are running very smoothly in IT these days, and one thing I would share is that this coming weekend, on Sunday, our partners at Yamhill County are gonna be doing some system maintenance, which is gonna affect our phone lines throughout the city. There's gonna be about a 12-hour downtime of outage, and we've worked with YCOM to handle 24-hour calls to the public works lines and for the building inspection lines, and we've made arrangements on multiple fronts to make sure that our law enforcement, public safety services are covered during that time. So hopefully, it will really take about half that time, but we'll be watching closely on Sunday to make sure everything comes up okay.
Thank you, Scott. Hi, Heather?
Yeah, so Mayor and city council, I did want to talk a little bit about our building division tonight, um, we've had a lot of changes there. We do have a new building inspector, uh, Robert Ragers, who, um, has been a great hire. He's energetic, he's interested in learning more, and he's partnering with our development community on, um, helping to ensure that we're building safe products, but the best products for McMinnville. Um, we also, we, uh, used to contract for our plumbing inspection services, and we just recently, um, hired a part-time plumbing inspector who's gonna help us until we can get Robert into a place of being certified, and then our new building official certified. Uh, his name is Bernie McNelly, one of the nicest guys I think I've ever met, he's an older gentleman, he's taken us all under his wing, um, but he'll be with us until the end of February, so I invite you to stop by and say hi to him. And then our new building official will be starting on October 2nd, his, uh, he's, uh, coming to us from Colorado, I believe he's on the road this week, he's packed up his households and is moving here, um, and we're excited to have him start, but no one's more excited than Bob Poskin, who is our existing building official that retired in May. Um, he retired in May, he realized that, um, we had a recruitment process in front of us that was pretty tough, because everyone's hiring building officials these days, and there aren't as many, um, out there. Um, and so he agreed to stay with us, uh, through until we got a new building official in place, and this is, this was critical for us for one, for many reasons, but one primary reason, which was with the school bond, we had a lot of school construction projects this summer that needed to be done when school was not in session, they were in very compressed timeframes, um, and so we needed to be in a place where we could be timely and responsive when they needed us to be, so all those schools could open up for when the students were coming back to school. Um, and we did have one come down to the wire. I will tell you, we did not get to a point where we were gonna issue a temporary certificate of occupancy for the high school project until 4 o'clock Friday afternoon before Labor Day weekend. To get us there, Bob was willing to come in on weekends, he also ca, he didn't have to, um, but he did come in many days at 6:30 in the morning and spend four to five hours out on the project site to get us to a point where we could get that TCO out the door. So the high school was able to open up on the Tuesday when it needed to open up, but a lot of that was due to Bob, so, um, I would ask you to stop by and thank him for his efforts, and also for his time with the city of McMinnville. He is telling us daily how many days and hours he has left. Um, so, you know, he's excited to finally retire, I think this is his third try, but this might be the successful one for that, uh, and we, we appreciate his willingness to stay with us until we were able to bring a new building official online, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Did I say something about Bob?
Yeah.
Uh, just publicly, it's, uh, it's been a pleasure to work with.
Good stories, though, right?
Oh, yeah. Very good, very good. He's, uh, because of his age and experience, uh, he's stabilized the, the, that, the building department, not that they were unstable, it's just that he filled a void that is really needed, uh, for the community, and he's done it with, uh, with good old know-how from, from the old days. And maybe he didn't go by the book, like Mike Bissett would want him to do all the time, but he really stabilized things for the, and it's been a pleasure to work down there, uh, with him and his staff and, and everybody else down there, so he's really done a remarkable job, and I've got to know him, has it been six years?
Yeah.
Six years now.
Yeah. Well, thank you for that update, Heather, and Chuck, thank you for the extra efforts you've been putting in on the sign ordinance and the many things you're doing also, and it's good to have you here tonight and be able to, to have your presentations. I just love the, the concise way that you can go through things, so we appreciate you being here. Uh, David?
Uh, nothing at this time.
And Jeff?
Just a couple of quick things on behalf of Mike Bissett, who's not here tonight. Uh, we did, uh, we only added a couple of new positions to the budget this year, one of them was a community outreach and coordination position, uh, we have successfully made and had an offer accepted, uh, to fill that position, and we're looking forward to a new incumbent, uh, joining us in that position. It's only a little ways away, right, Heather?
Next week.
Yeah, a week away, so we'll have somebody new, and we'll bring that person to the council at some point when it's convenient to introduce you. Um, you know, this sort of a, kind of an opaque, messy internal activity that we deal with sometimes is, uh, making sure that we have rules and regulations in order. The city has an employee handbook, but it's a thousand years old, approximately, and I heard about that many times that it was something that we really needed to work on. Um, so we've, uh, we've identified some external capacity to help with that, we've, uh, hired a, um, consultant to help, uh, the person you may or may not remember, a woman named Candace Haynes, um, who will actually be helping us out, um, creating a new employee handbook for us.
That's great.
That's great.
Well, thank you, Jeff. Uh, we'll go ahead and conclude our council meeting this evening, thank you.
She'll get her third retirement.
Yeah.
Also, two things. She was already retired, wasn't she?
Keep thinking of ways to bring her back.